It is four o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the roll call.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable has sent his regrets. Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you. The land acknowledgement. As we work toward reconciliation with indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipwas of Sogin and the Chipwas of Newash, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, June the third, two thousand and twenty-four. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and of course, the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest or a conflict of interest? Of course, if one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. Item four is agenda additions or deletions, and we do not have any. Item five is our health and safety message brought to us by Councillor Hawking. And I take, you have a long one this time.
Thank you, your worship. A very timely message. It's titled Protect Yourself From Tick Bites. The following information that I'm going to read to you was provided within a news release from the Ministry of Health dated May the second, two thousand and twenty-four. As temperatures start to climb and when enjoying the outdoors, precautions should be taken to prevent tick bites and reduce the risk of contracting Lyme disease and other tick-borne diseases from an infected black-legged tick, normally called a deer tick. When going into a wooded area or an area with tall grass and bushes, you can protect yourself by the following five points. Number one, wearing light-colored clothing so it's easy to spot the ticks. Number two, wearing long-sleeved shirts, long pants tucked into your socks, closed-toed shoes, or any special clothing designed to repel ticks. Applying number three, applying insect repellent, normally containing DEET, spelled D-E-E-T, on your exposed skin and your clothes. Checking yourself, your children, and your pets for ticks after being outdoors. Any ticks found should be removed properly. And finally, number five, putting your clothes on high heat in a dryer for at least ten minutes before washing them after spending time outdoors. Ticks are very small and hard to see. When found, remove by using a fine-tipped tweezers to grasp the tick as close to your skin as possible without crushing it. Once removed, wash your skin with soap and water and disinfect your skin and your hands with rubbing alcohol or an iodine swab. Before disposing of the tick, call or check the website of your local public health unit to get advice on how to identify the tick. You can also submit a photo of the tick to etick.ca for identification. If you have any symptoms such as a fever, a headache, chills, muscle and joint pain, fatigue, and an expanding circular rash that resembles a bullseye, consult a health care provider as soon as possible. Most cases of Lyme disease can be treated with antibiotics. Pharmacists are permitted to prescribe medication to treat tick bites to prevent Lyme disease. For more information on ticks and tick-borne diseases, visit ontario.ca/ticks. Thank you.
Very good, and as you said, very timely. Something we can all learn as they're becoming more prevalent. We're going to move right on to item eight, as we do not have any delegations or business arising from the minutes. So, item eight is staff reports. The first one, eight point one, is Report DCS zero eight twenty-four. The subject is the two thousand and twenty-four final blended tax rates. It is from Chris Walker, our Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Deputy Mayor Dickert and Councillor Fleet. Chris?
Thank you, your worship. Councilmember, remember back in January, we had our budget meeting, and then we had a subsequent revision. On February twentieth was real no change to the total tax levy required. It's still coming in at nine million one hundred two thousand four hundred dollars, which is an increase of six hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred over the two thousand and twenty-three levy, or an eight point one eight percent increase. There's a chart showing you how the increase has come about. Most of that is coming from the police services of four point three five percent of that increase, point five five percent from the library and other board organizations that the town does not have direct authority over, and the rest of the three point two eight percent is for the town portion. The tax ratios are approved by the County of Gray for two thousand and twenty-four, and they have changed from the two thousand and twenty-three rates, and that would be the multi-residential ratio has been reduced down. Now, this is a four-year phase-in that started last year, and it's until the old multi-residential reaches the new multi-residential ratio of one, which is equal to the residential ratio. So, this is an ongoing thing. There'll be another one next year, and then the final year will be in two thousand and twenty-seven, when it will all be down to one. The other ratios have remained the same. So, basically, it comes down for every dollar the resident pays. The commercial pays a dollar twenty-nine, industrial pays a dollar eighty-three, a pipeline pays ninety cents, farmland pays almost twenty-two cents, and managed forest is twenty-five percent. So, that's what the ratios are put in place for. Based on the average household assessment of two hundred nineteen thousand nine forty-four, the two thousand and twenty-four tax ratio changes impacts the levy by about fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. So, basically, every every hundred thousand is affected because of this change to the multi-residential by about six dollars ninety-nine cents. So, based on our average assessment, the town's tax rate input of the eight point one eight percent levy reaches out to about a hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-three cent increase, or a six point eight four percent, which council agreed to. That works out to about forty cents a day. And that same amount is for every hundred thousand, again, a six point eight four percent. It would be sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents for every hundred thousand. Works out to eighteen cents a day for every hundred thousand. The Education Act passed on January nineteenth, which tells us what the tax rates for education should be, and the county rates were approved on March. However, we had to wait until the county rates were approved at the Owen Sound in mid-May in order to make those ratios effective all across the board for the County of Gray. That's why it's been such a delay getting the blended tax rates to the council. The financial implications, once you blend the rates of the town, the county, and the education rates, you will see the overall increases of six point zero two percent. Six point eight four percent of that is the town, six point three two percent is the county, and there was no change to the education. Again, I go back to the town of Hanover has the assessment for the town of Hanover only. So, any growth is just town Hanover only. The county has all of the nine municipalities. So, any growth is from all nine municipalities, and the education is from the province, which gets all the assessment from all of the province. So, it has more than just the town of Hanover. So, they can afford to leave their tax rates the same, but bring in a lot more money. So, the overall impact on a regular assessment of two hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred is about fifty-five cents a day, of which forty cents is the town, and fifteen cents would be for the county. Now, based on a hundred thousand, that would work out to eighteen cents a day from the town, and seven cents from the county, or twenty-five cents a day overall. Again, six point zero two percent. On the next page, which is page eight, I've given you the effect of the two thousand and twenty-four tax rate. This basically shows the percentage of the collected taxes the town retains by the assessment class. So, every dollar that we receive, we get to keep sixty-five cents for every resident. Multi-res, we get to keep sixty-six cents. Commercial, we get to keep forty-nine cents, and industry, we get to keep fifty-four cents for every dollar. So, that just kind of gives you a breakdown, gives you the share of the tax dollars. On the next page, it's just showing you at two hundred nineteen thousand nine forty-four, which is our average assessment, and there was no reassessment how that increase of that six point zero two percent across the board works. Again, six point eight four is the increase for the town portion, six point three two for the County of Gray, and the education has a zero percent. Just gives you the individual information. The next page, on page ten, shows you the share of the tax dollars. So, on a basic two hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred forty-four assessment, taxpayer will be paying three thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars and forty-four cents, of which the town gets to keep sixty-five percent, or two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents. And again, it breaks it down there again for the commercial and industrial. And then on the last page, which is page eleven, it actually shows of that sixty-five percent that we get to retain of the two thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents, how it is allocated by department. And you will notice that thirty-two percent of everything that we collect goes to the police, twenty-two percent goes to recreation, and the balance of forty-eight percent goes to the other eight to ten departments. So, the link to the strategic plan is obviously all five goals, goal one, two, three, four, and five. I don't have to tell you each individual goal, because they're all the same. So, the recommendation is that the Report DCS zero eight two-four, the two thousand and twenty-four final blended tax rates be received, and that a bi-lay confirming the two thousand and twenty-four municipal budget and the applicable tax rates be presented for council's consideration, and that will be at the next council meeting on June seventeenth. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments? Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm wondering, Chris, if you can tell me whether the tax ratios for the multi-residential will be about the same amount next year as it is this year, the increase?
It'll be decreasing down. So, it's down from one point three. It was originally one point four four, and it's gone down to one point three three, and it has dropped to one point two two, so it'll be one point one one in two thousand and twenty-five, and then in two thousand and twenty-six, it'll actually be one.
So, that in part is why the increase, that's a good part of why the increase, though?
Well, six dollars and ninety-nine cents of every hundred thousand assessment on the town portion. So, we're saying that sixty-six dollars and ninety-four cents is our impact to the residents, but basically about seven dollars of that is the impact because of the ratios changed.
Other comments or questions? I'll call the question all in favor. That is carried. Item eight point two is Report PW thirteen dash twenty-four. The subject is the two thousand and twenty-four road resurfacing tender. It's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Sackel and Councillor Hudson. Ron?
Thank you, your worship. This report deals with the results of the two thousand and twenty-four road resurfacing tender. The background on to this is we have approximately thirteen kilometers of Hanover's forty-five kilometers of road network, which is constructed with surface treatment. These are typically the wider roads without curb and gutter. Based upon industry standards, these roads require resurfacing on an eight to ten-year life cycle. Based upon base stability, soil condition, and road usage, our experience with micro-surfacing is that for low-volume roads with a stable base, we've been able to extend the life of these roads an additional fifteen to twenty years. That's typically another, at least two coatings that we would put on them. An annual review of these of these roads, in addition to the roads' reassessment that was completed in two thousand and eighteen, has been used to determine the priorities for the annual budget. This year, we're looking at four different areas, which there is a map attached, one being Nineteenth Avenue from Eleventh to Fourteenth Street. Area number two is Twenty-first Avenue from Eleventh to Fourteenth Street. Area number three is Seventh Street from Eleventh to Twelfth Avenue. And area number four is Second Street West of Eleventh Avenue. A tender for micro-surfacing was issued to Dunkore Enterprises, Inc., and Miller Paving Limited, formerly MSL Construction, as these are the only two firms to meet the specifications for this type of product to apply. Both firms submitted a tender as of the closing time of Wednesday, May twenty-second at two P M. The results are shown on the report. Dunkore, which is the low bidder for this request for proposal that was sent out, has completed similar work for the town since two thousand and twelve, have had follow-up discussions with Dunkore. They indicate they would be able to complete the work mid-August. This is typically a one- to two-day project that would be to complete this work. Prior to commencing, the contractor would distribute a notice with respect to parking on the roadway during the actual application of the project. The quote from Dunkore Enterprises of seventy-four thousand and sixteen dollars was within the budget allocation of eighty thousand. The unit price that they used for micro-surfacing is five dollars and fourteen cents per square meter, and this is the same price they've held up over the last two years from two thousand and twenty-two. And the recommendation is the Report PW thirteen dash twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four road resurfacing tender be received. The council accept the tender by Dunkore Enterprises, Inc., for the two thousand and twenty-four supply and application of micro-road resurfacing for a cost of seventy-four thousand and sixteen dollars plus H S T. Pretty straightforward, but if council would have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thanks, Ron. Is there any discussion or comments? Councillor Sackel?
Thank you, your worship. Just a comment. Ron, with all the price increases that we have seen in the last year, I'm surprised to see that this has not increased in terms of the unit price for micro-surfacing. Is that because we've done work with them before, or is that just the situation the way it is, and you're a happy man?
We've done quite a bit of work with Dunkore over the previous years. Good relationship. We know the company, though they know our municipality and kind of what they have to work with when they have work and are looking at doing in our area. I know sometimes they're working in other areas close by, and the schedule changes slightly, and, you know, we, at best we can, if we can make arrangements to accommodate them, as long as notice is given out prior to the residents, we make that happen. And I think that relationship that we have with Dunkore shows in their ability to hold the price and continue to work with us.
Through your worship, then. Thank you for all the work you're doing. Obviously, you're doing the right thing. Thank you.
Any other comments? I'll call the question. All those in favor of PW thirteen twenty-four? That is carried. Item eight point three, this is on page fifteen, is Report PW fourteen dash twenty-four. The subject is the SCADA upgrade, and it's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works. I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Hawking and Councillor Fleet. All yours, Ron.
Thank you, your worship. This recommendation is a result of another request for proposal that we put out for upgrading a SCADA system at the water treatment plant and some other components of the waterworks. Just to provide you with some background there, the current supervisory control and data acquisition, which we know it as SCADA system for the water treatment plant, comprised of hardware and software components, was originally installed in nineteen eighty-nine. That was with the establishment of the water treatment plant. There was upgrades completed during the two thousand and eleven water treatment plant expansion. What we have found out is the current SCADA system will be obsolete in two thousand and twenty-six, with software support no longer being provided by the original supplier like SAS Process Controls. Currently, we have another supplier working with us to provide support for our system in the interim. In two thousand and twenty-three, we engaged Aramosa Engineering, Inc. to complete a SCADA review for the purposes of providing direction on future SCADA upgrades. This review was inclusive of all systems, being the water treatment plant, well number two, well number one, Rural Lake, and the Two Towers, Fourteenth Street, and Seventh Avenue Tower. All those systems need to be integrated, work together, feed information to the SCADA system, which is at the water treatment plant, to make the entire process work. They also did a review of our communications equipment between the sites, which is recommending updating to modern ethernet radios, as well as separating the SCADA from the network, from the municipal network as as cybersecurity improvements there. The review provided specific recommendations at each of the sites. We actually excluded the Seventh Ave Tower. When that one gets replaced, which is scheduled for completion late two thousand and twenty-five, it would come with its own SCADA system, which would be tied in to this recommendation going forward. Based upon the complexity of the water system, SCADA upgrades, a phased approach is was proposed. Phase one would be the SCADA system server at the water treatment plant, and upgrades there, that's scheduled for two thousand and twenty-four. In phase two, which would be two thousand and twenty-five, we would be looking at Rural Lake and the Fourteenth Street Tower. And phase three in two thousand and twenty-six would be well number one and well number two. From the information we got back from the review of the system and recommendations, they had specific elements identified exactly what needed to be upgraded in terms of specific hardware. We used that as a comprehensive R F P, which we we put out, advertised on the town's website on Bidden Co. Initially, we had a closing date of May second, but realizing the complexity of the R F P, the ability to get electrical subtrades to submit prices to the general contractor. The request for proposal deadline was extended to May twenty-fourth. As of the closing time and date, May twenty-third, I meant to say of May twenty-third, we had two proposals in, one being from Aramosa Engineering, and the other ones from Actium Toronto-Suma, which we know them as SUMA. They would be the two major providers of SCADA systems throughout Ontario. We've actually did a technical review on the proposals that were submitted by both firms, and they both are providing the same software components. Those have a vast amount of experience in development of implementation of water system SCADA systems, in particular, SUMA, which we focused in being the low bidder on that. They've got over forty years' experience in the design and implementation of SCADA systems. They're working along with a company, BMC Electrica Mommer, who has previous experience in projects that was listed, Muskoka, Owensound, York Region. They provided references, which we have followed up on overall work done by SUMA and SCADA System and their support. Union Water System, which is down Essex, Kingsville, Lakeshore, and Leamington Way, New Tecumseh, and City of Avoria. Follow-up discussions have confirmed that SUMA is very organized and going through this knowledgeable, and are able to provide customer service and backup support as is going to be needed, be ongoing. The financial implications for that is the proposal by SUMA of seven hundred and three thousand two hundred plus H S T for all three phases is significantly below what we had projected, a total cost of one point five million. As I say, it's proposed over three years. We had projected in two thousand and twenty-four alone that phase being the most significant one, being eight hundred thousand, twenty twenty-five, three hundred and thirty, and two thousand and twenty-six, three seventy. Another part of the component was when we put out the R F P, is that it's based in over three years, and what they felt is there any escalation for the hardware and software components that we would provide them any escalation cost. They provide us with proof of what their cost was at time of tendering. We pay for any escalation costs over the next, in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. Thinking that's a fair approach to things. They can justify what their labor, labor costs are, installation costs, but some other outright capital costs and purchasing hardware and software costs provide us with proof of actual costs and increase, and that could be justified. Costs that are not included is network equipment, i.e. a modem, router, wireless radio upgrade, is being supplied by other companies. That is a smaller component estimated at twenty thousand dollars. That would bring our total project cost, work by same in the network, equipment to seven twenty-three thousand plus H S T. Our link to our strategic plan would be safe and reliable infrastructure, open and responsible government. And the recommendation is that Report PW fourteen dash twenty-four, water system supervisory control, data acquisition, or SCADA upgrade be received, and the project be awarded to Actium Toronto-Suma for a total cost of seven hundred and three thousand two hundred, and the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to enter into contract with that company for the water system upgrade. If there would be any questions, I would be happy to answer them. Went through a very exclusive tender, tender R F P and review process last year to come up with specific requirements for this, and I think we've got a solid proposal submitted. But if any questions, I would be pleased to answer them.
Thanks, Ron. Are there questions? Deputy Mayor Dickert?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Ron. Just my question is, since the price is favorable compared to what we were thinking it would be, would we be, is there capacity to do it all in the one year and then avoid any potential escalation in hardware and software costs? I realize it doesn't really do much for our levy, because it's all coming out of water funds. So, it doesn't have a big advantage there, other than securing the price and not having to concern ourselves with those escalation costs, or do they not have capacity to do it all in one year? And the recommendation, I believe, said spreading it over three years, is that so that you wouldn't have some catastrophic failure and take everything down at once?
Based upon the complexity, it is actually, it is recommended to do over the three-year period. It's going to be tight actually for them to get the bulk of the component done, the main bulk of it done within this year. And I think it makes it easier for integration to just look at the water treatment component for this year, deal with the other minor components in the following subsequent years. What we see as being the significant cost is development and design of the SCADA system. That's all covered this year. And minor components are going to be the hardware and software. What's the escalation? I don't see it being significant in the subsequent years.
And is there any significant training requirements for staff with the new system?
Staff training is being provided as part of the phase one of the introduction of the new SCADA software program, and prior to startup and turn over to staff. So, training, testing, startup, all those components are part of the overall price proposal.
Any other comments or questions? And I see we have our chief operator online, if there are other technical questions. Councillor Fleet?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Ron, for your report. I find it very interesting that we're like fifty percent well below the projected Thank you, worship, and thank you, Ron, for your report. I find it very interesting that we're like fifty percent well below the projected cost and. I just wonder. How we got there, like where did the one point five million come from? And this fifty percent, and this is great news, but I just wonder there's such a swing here, such a difference.
We had got the initial cost estimate when the review was completed. Last year and. We've went out to proposals, got got two different prices and. Competition has made it come in significantly less.
Thanks, and you know, that's great news for the municipality and just such a big difference and I'm just curious. Thank you.
Other comments or questions, discussion? Chris.
Just so we're aware how it's being funded in twenty twenty four, we originally budgeted eight hundred thousand. Two hundred was to come from sewer fees as we collect them this year. And the other six hundred was coming from the reserve fund, so obviously it'll still be two hundred thousand sewer fees. And then it will be the two forty two two from the reserve fund. And then in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six, they originally were budgeted all to come from sewer fees. At about three hundred, three hundred and thirty thousand and then three hundred and seventy thousand. So the reduction to one twenty seven nine and one thirty three one will still come from the sewer reserves sewer. Fees that year, just so you're aware, that's how it was funded. It's project thirteen in your binders if you're looking back on the project for capital.
Thanks for that, Chris. Okay, I don't see any other hands, so I will call the question all in favor of report P W fourteen twenty four. That is carried. Thanks, Ron, and thanks, Ted. We do not have any correspondence requiring action, so we'll move on to item ten, which is. Reports and correspondence for information, ten point one is report C A O zero nine twenty four. The subject is the organizational review. And it's from our C A O Sherry Walden. Sherry.
Thank you, your worship. This report is provided for council's information and awareness. As you're aware, within the open and responsible government goal of our strategic plan. It included the action to complete an organizational review. The action within the strategic plan and detailed in the background section of this report. Included a number of objectives. I'm not going to review them all because they were considered. When confirming the scope of work aspect, so I'll touch on some of those as we move forward in the with the report. The organization review involves engaging a professional firm. To review and analyze our organizational structure in relation to corporate. Departmental and staff responsibilities and service delivery workloads. This review will result in the identification of options and development of recommendations for our corporate structure and staff resourcing. That will ensure efficiency and effectiveness in meeting our current and anticipated service delivery requirements. And to provide implementation of our strategic priorities. The scope of work and the key scope of work deliverables is provided for council's information in this discussion section of the report. I'm just going to highlight on a high level those items. This will review will include non-union and union positions in all departments. It is not going to include our volunteer on-call paid firefighters, library, launchpad or police services. It will review and evaluate our staffing levels and functional assignments and workload and alignment with our workflows, our priorities from strategic perspective. As well as any legislation and service delivery requirements. The third bullet is really the key one. It's going to review, evaluate and provide recommendations for the town's organizational structure. And department assignments that will help to improve effectiveness and efficiencies. Address our strategic plan priorities, support succession planning, align compatible responsibilities with roles and departments. And address identified service delivery workload demands and identify opportunities to optimize technology use. So again, within that strategic plan goal, a number of those terms were referenced and you'll see that reflected in that. That scope of work deliverable item. A plan, an implementation plan will be provided with timelines and associated financial impacts and considerations for the town's. Organizational structure recommendations. It will include comprehensive or recommend, sorry, comprehensive position descriptions for any new positions. And amendments to existing position descriptions for revised positions. And will also undertake a benchmarking comparison of the town's current organizational structure. And staffing levels against municipalities of similar size and range of services provided. There'll be an input and engagement piece that will include council and all employees in the process. The final report and presentation will be provided to council outlining the findings and recommendations. It's projected that the RFP award will be confirmed at the July fifteenth council meeting. That's our kind of our timeline for bringing this forward. And it's from information source from other municipalities that have completed similar work. It can take approximately four to five months to complete the review. The twenty twenty four approved budget does include fifty thousand for the completion of the review. And this was offset through a transfer from general reserves. So again, this report is provided to you for your information and awareness and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there questions? Counselor Sackle.
Thank you, your worship. Sherry, just out of curiosity, has the town of Hanover gone through this process in the past? And if so, when?
In my term time here, which is a fairly long time, no, that has not been the case. We did do a service delivery review, but that was more around services as opposed to organizational structure and staffing, so. Not in the last thirty two years, let's put it that way.
Counselor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. I'm wondering if you could tell me, Sherry, the different, the other municipalities that you're approaching of the similar size. To compare to?
Which municipalities will be approached? Sorry to clarify. Well, that'll be something that the professional firm that we engage with. Would go out and determine which the municipalities they would consider to be similar size and scope. We probably would use our list. As a starting point that we use when we do our market analysis. We've got quite a list from that that's been established when we do our compensation review market analysis. So that probably will be used as a starting point, but the 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 firm that's chosen will provide some suggestions of communities they would reach out to.
Other comments? Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, worship. The first bullet. To review non-union and union positions. What role will the union play in in this organization review?
Well, again, they'll review the union positions and the intent is that, again. Staff, like we're looking to engage all employees as well. I've seen in some other municipalities where they've engaged like a staff. A staff survey, so we would include all of our employees in that union and non-union as such.
Anyone else? Counselor Fleet.
I think you're worship and thank you, Sherry. You know, I think this is a great opportunity. To review and our strengths and our weaknesses and where we can improve, and I think this is a big part of our strategic plan, and I think it's going to be great for councils going forward, so. I think this is going to be great for our municipality going forward, so thank you.
Okay, so that's for information. Oh, Counselor Hawking, sorry.
Thank you, worship. I just want to echo Counselor Fleet. I think this is. An excellent idea and it's great to get an external review to look at our entire organization. And. So that's five, so it'll probably be near the end of the year then, right, Sherry?
Approximately, that's what I'm estimating.
Yep, okay.
We haven't specified an end, a projected end date. We need to see from anybody who bids on this process or a project. What their work plan is and what they could project to be their. End date, I guess I would say, estimating.
All right, moving on, ten point two, we're on page twenty one. This is the library board meeting minutes, Counselor Hudson.
Thank you, your worship. So the public library board minutes are from April seventeenth. And I'll just highlight a few things. An increase of membership was brought forward. And the CEO highlighted that the following Ontario Library Week promotion that was held, I believe in October. That people were coming back following the end of the promotion. To purchase full memberships, so that was. That was a. A good thing to to try out and see if that would work. Some of them also have done done just a three month membership as well. So we did hold a staff appreciation. The board put on a staff appreciation party for the staff because we've had a lot of. Changes and needed a little morale boost, so that was. That was a very positive thing. They found out things about the trustees and we found out things about the staff, so it was a very cohesive date. We are doing, as I've mentioned before, we were at the Home and Garden Show. Sorry, Home and Lifestyle Show as well with the. Town of Hanover and Splash Pad Committee. And the CEO is meeting with Parks and Rec about some joint programs. And we also have the trivia night coming up on Friday, June the twenty first, the first day of summer. At the Hanover Legion and people are signing their teams up now, lots of great prizes, et cetera. We've also had a number of people taking advantage of the seed library with. Thirteen hundred packages of seeds going out in the last three months. I personally have four little pots at my house. I have poppies that I'm excited to see what they turn out like. People entering the library has increased by five hundred. In this quarter since last year. So obviously, some of the programs, et cetera, are doing a really good job of reaching people and bringing them in the door. Also, this is kind of encouraging. Last year, thirty six percent of the population of Hanover had a library card. As of this year, right now, we are at forty one percent, so. I think the library is. Coming up to, you know, fulfill a lot of expectations for people, so that's great. And. There were. There's two new employees that have been hired as well. So a new customer service associate has been hired. His first name is David and he's replacing someone, also replacing a page and new page is Chantel. And the branch manager. That was replacing Carolyn, who stepped into CEO position. His name is Alex, so if you have an opportunity to get into the library and meet some of these new people, that would be great.
Very good, thank you. Okay, ten point three is the Police Services Board Minutes from May twenty first, and I will highlight those. I can say that all members, all board members have now completed the mandatory roles and responsibilities training. The twenty twenty three Hanover Police Service Annual Report will be presented at our next meeting in June. And the chief reviewed the operational report where calls are down slightly in the first quarter of twenty twenty four. But are higher so far in the second quarter. And interesting, calls from Monday through Friday are higher than calls on the weekend. And the chief confirmed that calls are prioritized and officers will be redirected to more serious calls that come in when they get stacked up. And I do want to highlight community events that the police service is involved in because I think it's important that these presentations. They build trust and positive relationships with our community members. And it is crucial for a safe and well-informed community. So chief for the day contest winners have been awarded and two young individuals will join the police service on June thirteenth. As the junior chief and the junior deputy chief of the day. So stay tuned for that and we'll let the chief do his promotion on that and announce who the winners are. Chief Noel presented to a careers class and a law class at Sacred Heart High School in Warkerton. He was also the guest speaker at the Chamber Luncheon at Grace United Church, at the missionary church and at the Village Seniors. Two officers assisted for two days at the Saugin Valley Safety Village. While Hanover students were there attending at the village. And one officer participated in a mental health symposium in partnership with Keystone Child and Youth and Family Services. Two officers also assisted with Mc Happy Day at McDonald's. McDonald's Restaurant, so they are out and about trying to. Meet people and build those relationships, so. Open to questions if anyone has any, and I should have said that about Counselor Hudson for the library. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Counselor Hudson.
I'm just wondering, when you have all of the correspondence, there's a lot of interesting. Things that have come up in that and is that available for the general public? For example. You know, immediate family wellness program, Community Safety and Policing Act, like are those things that are. Brought forth to the general population if they're informative?
So I'll have to check the police, Hanover Police website, whether those, the correspondence is included. Because the package would be on there. If there's anything on there, if you were to give me notice, if something was of interest. I could highlight it during these highlights, so. Yes.
Perfect, thank you, because there's a lot of things in there that look very interesting for for our population.
Yes, for sure. Send me an email and I can highlight each one and pull it up and we can discuss it. Okay, good. Item ten point four is Launchpad, Board of Directors Meeting and Counselor Sackle. It's going to highlight both.
Thank you, your worship. So these are the minutes from May the twenty seventh, which was just last week. So first of all, I'd like to thank Counselor Cable for serving as our board secretary. And for submitting our minutes so promptly. As you can see, we just met last week and here they are in draft form. As promised, a folder containing board meeting minutes has now been posted to Launchpad's website. You can find it on the Meet the Team and Board of Directors page. You'll notice on page twenty nine that we identify the annual meeting of the corporation to be held on Monday, June the twenty fourth. That time of seven fifteen might be shifted a little later. There's some concerns that the. Council, for instance, will be at the Trail Bridge opening at six P M, so we might shift it back a little bit later than that. You will find out when Rebecca comes to council in a delegation on June the seventeenth. And she'll confirm those times and of course, we'll be placing information on with our website, social media, the Chamber eBlast, et cetera. Rebecca updated our finances and we're looking pretty good at this time. We've had a number of donations that make us happy. Bruce Power has provided a grant to support our welding program. The Power Workers Union has donated money to support a new electrical training program. And Gemini is also making a donation in the near future. The executive director also reported that the Launchpad videos were uploaded to YouTube and they've also been added to our Launchpad website. Board recruitment materials have been sent out and so far, we've had two applications for consideration that makes us happy. April and May have been very busy with the grade seven and eight field trips, and this is going to continue, of course, into June. Saugin Academy has been coming to Launchpad and students have completed a three-week construction program. Fanshawe College is also running a child and youth care dual credit course every Wednesday at Launchpad, and they're also interested in running a baking class in the fall. The fundraising committee is finalizing campaign materials and developing. A Launchpad wishlist to guide for future donations and for any grant applications. The operation committee has determined sadly that it's not financially viable. To operate Neptune Scoops this summer. We didn't get a grant that we were hoping for. So our youth, I'm going to end by saying that our youth programs manager is expected to return in mid-July. I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Are there questions? Okay, we'll move on. Ten point five, we're on page thirty one of the package, the Saugin Municipal Airport Commission Meeting Minutes. Counselor Hawking.
Thank you, worship. I'll just run through the minutes and highlight. So business arising from the minutes, again, I just want to remind you, the Saturday, June the eighth. At nine o'clock. We are having a day to salute our first responders. Hopefully, we get a good turnout. The the airport manager report. Basically tied in a couple of items that we needed to look at from a maintenance. And following his report, there were motions to. Address them and they were carried. B Victor Denali, who is a commissioner. Reported on the Friends of the Airport, which is another name for Colpa fifty four. uh, reported on the Friends of the Airport, which is another name for Culpa fifty-four. And, uh, uh, the Kids Fly event is on eight August, the twenty-fourth. That's always a, a great day. Um, new business, we had, um, a little discussion based on an article by one of our commissioners. Uh, Brockton Commissioner who wrote a, uh, report in the local Walker and Herald Times titled, "The Airport Would Be Better Under Private Ownership." Needless to say, that prompted some discussion from us. Um, and I just wanted to highlight that some of his points were, uh, not factual. And, um, I, I, I clarified some of the things that, um, I found not to be not to be factual as, as indicated in the report. Um, there was another response to his letter called, "The Airport Is Hardly A Burden," and that was also circulated at the mi- at the, uh, meeting. Uh, bylaws, we are going to pass the bylaw that we've, uh, been sitting on, um, for over a year. Uh, if you remember, Puran Law was, um, was, was hired by our previous, uh, airport, uh, chair. So you can see how long ago that was. Uh, and basically we were going nowhere with that, uh, that group. And we turned it over to our three clerks who did an ama- amazing job. And they worked with the, the Puran Law lawyer and have come up with, uh, the two bylaws, which we will address at our June nineteenth mi- uh, meeting. Other than that, uh, the others was a closed session and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any hands, so we'll move on. Ten point, uh, six is the Gray County Council and Committee of the Whole Highlights, Deputy Mayor Dicker.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, it was Paramedic Services Week and Public Works Week. And, uh, Warden Milne thanked the staff for their dedication to those, uh, the people that are in those roles. We also had Gray County Councillor and Town of Blue Mountains Mayor, Mayor, uh, Andrea Matrasovs, who has received the Ontario Member of the Year Award from the Great Lakes and Saint Lawrence Cities Initiative for her contributions to the organizations and its mission of promoting access to clean, safe and affordable water for residents of the basin. Uh, quite an accomplishment considering there's some pretty big cities border on the Great Lakes and, uh, we have a representative from the Town of Blue Mountains who was recognized for her efforts there. So, uh, certainly, uh, congratulations to Andrea on that, uh, accomplishment. Uh, the county voted to move, uh, their mileage reimbursement to align with the CRA policy, which is the same as what the town does. Um, we approved the purchase of land for the ambulance base in Durham. That's, was in the works. It's just kind of made it official. We discussed the support that the county would take in relation to the Durham Hospital bed closures. And as a result of that, a meeting has been requested for the, uh, Warden Milne to meet with the Minister of Health. Uh, discussed the, uh, what delegations we would request at the upcoming AMO conference and, uh, five of the requests relate to a healthy rural communities, which kind of revolves around, you know, hospital beds and, and, uh, rural healthcare and all of those things. And, uh, Bruce County is also going to be taking part in some of those, uh, delegations. And Gray County is also going to ask for a meeting with the Ministry of Transport to discuss the Highway twenty-six corridor and what can be done to deal with their traffic, uh, volumes in that area. And, uh, that kind of sums up our meeting. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Thank you. And I don't see any. So ten point seven is a, uh, resolution from Georgian Bluffs, the township of Georgian Bluffs requesting, uh, the province to amend the blue box regulation. And I'm going to ask Ron if he would sort of share what the, uh, producer responsibility is all about. We need more details on this.
Okay, thank you, Worship. Um, this has kind of been on, ongoing since, uh, when the regulation was put through. It's got three ninety-one dash twenty-one, so back in twenty twenty-one. What it called for is, um, residential, residential schools, long-term care facilities and retirement homes. That, um, the producers would be a hundred percent responsibility for their, their recycling costs. But then, of course, there is some non-eligible sources part of it, which would be not part of that regulation. And that includes, um, places of worship, daycares, campgrounds, which wouldn't be applicable to us, um, uh, municipally owned, owned buildings, non-for-profit organizations, uh, shelters and food banks. So it's not all, all-inclusive of all sectors, but it took in account, uh, the residential, takes into account schools, long-term uh, care facilities and retirement homes. What, uh, the regulation put forward is, uh, sending a letter suggesting that this regulation be amended to include all, uh, all of the sources. Maybe my comment now, since that's been ongoing and through with a lot of works on it since twenty twenty-one, that maybe at this stage of the game, support for that could be put through, but I think there's been a lot of work go on in changing the regulation, getting the producers online for those sectors which are eligible, that it may not get, uh, pushed through to include these other non, non-eligible sources. There would be other communities out there which would be further along in the process, which the transition period of all the municipalities in Ontario was over a three-year period. That started January first, twenty twenty-three. Our transition period is not till January first, twenty twenty-five. So I think maybe why you're seeing it for some of these other municipalities, because they've already experienced exactly what their costs are for the non-eligible sources. We're just getting into that. So our exact costs as of today are not, not totally known, because we haven't, you know, identified every specific, um, facility that would have been part of our recycling collection program that may want to continue on to have it, uh, collected and want to be part of that initial program. I would see that in our downtown core, there would be a number of businesses there which probably would want, want to be included and that to continue on. But then there would be a number of, in the non-eligible, um, businesses that, that might be in a mall, et cetera, that exist right now and they're already making their own arrangements for their, uh, recycling collection and they're already paying, paying for the costs. So I guess that's my kind of overall synopsis of the scenario and, uh,
That's good. That's more than I knew before. So thank you for that. Deputy Mayor Dicker.
Thank you, Worship. And, um, you know, I, I know that, uh, the program has started in some communities, as, as, uh, Ron has said. But I do see benefit in, in having it standardized across all of these businesses, because, you know, diversion, we're trying our best to do, divert as much as we can from our landfill sites. And as soon as you have these scattered programs of, you know, one place doing it one way and another place having to do another way, I think it takes away from that consistency that would, would likely generate better participation. So I, I myself, in, in fact, had made a note that I, I'd like to make a motion to support this letter. I think you're likely correct, Ron. It's going to be very difficult to change it right now when it's already rolled out in some municipalities, but it's likely those municipalities that are realizing how difficult this is to manage. So uh, I think if we just sit back and don't do anything, that's not serving us properly. We're better off to at least express our concerns and support this initiative to make it across the board.
Very good. Counselor Hawking.
Uh, I support Deputy Mayor, um, Dickert's, uh, if it's a motion or suggestion, I support it. Um, I, I'm just wondering, Ron, when you talk about, um, some municipalities are, are already in and the ineligible sources. Uh, would it be possible to contact a municipality of our size and determine just how much it costs uh, for the ineligible sources? Because I read it here and um, we probably would have a cost of our municipal own buildings. Um, so do I read this that the, the non-profit organizations have to pick up that cost? It wouldn't be the municipality.
What it is, that, that has to be decided. It, it could, could be determined and, uh, council could determine that these non-eligible service costs could go back on, onto the sector that's not supported. Uh, that would be a slight change in terms of what, what we're doing now, because within our, uh, agreement, uh, blue box curbside collection is actually, it's available to all, all sectors. So I think my thought is to maybe try and push back and say that we wouldn't be responsible for it, or maybe changing, um, the concept of what had been, um, you know, we had been supporting in the past.
Yeah, if we do that, then we're, we're, we're going against just what Deputy Mayor Dicker suggested, that uniformity is keys that we're all doing the same thing. If we for these, then we have no, if we say that we're not pay, we're not doing what we used to do, then they can do whatever they want if they're paying for it, correct? Ron?
Uh, I think I would have to answer that question with a yes.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me. It's something that we have to sort of get a hold of before January the first, twenty twenty-five. But in the meantime, I'd like to, again, endorse Deputy Mayor's suggestion that we endorse this correspondence. Thank you.
If I can just add and, and through you, Mayor Sue, but to Ron, like, Ron, my understanding is that there's that you're working through, um, the implementation and the phase when we are to start as of January. And I would foresee that there probably will be a follow-up report come to council, kind of about how that implementation looks, so to speak.
I would say the answer to that is, that is correct. Uh, they actually haven't determined who our service provider is going to be as of Janu- January first. That's going to become apparent to us. And once that comes apparent to us, then we have to work with that service provider to, uh, get the costs from them in terms of what our costs are going to be to look after these, uh, non-eligible, non-eligible sectors. And that also may involve putting a survey out there to, um, to all the business in their sector to determine at this point now what, um, what, uh, businesses, et cetera, out there actually are, are part of our, uh, curbside collection. And what part of them are, are currently not. I would think moving forward, our emphasis would be to, uh, try and provide this service, continuing on to the ones that are currently part of the blue box program. But a few things to get, um, worked out, um, throughout, uh, throughout the upcoming months and know where we're at before, uh, January first.
Sounds like there's a lot more information coming. Counselor Hawking.
Yes, uh, sorry to belabor this, but I just would like to ask another question of Ron. So let's suppose it's, uh, Agency X is our service provider. And they come along and say, uh, we have our own container that we want every resident to have. So the current blue boxes you've got to get rid of those. Uh, but you're going to have to buy this from us. Would, would they, would that ever be a scenario? Where the repair would be forced to purchase a new blue box container by the new service provider?
I believe in terms of the eligible sectors as part of the regulation, providing of the containers was, is to be, uh, part of the, uh, of the program.
Okay, so we can either receive this for information or Deputy Mayor Dicker has, um, rec, put a motion, well, not really put the motion, but suggested we support this resolution. And Counselor Hawking has, um, indicated he would also like to support it. Am I seeing nodding heads on this? Okay, and you're okay moving second. All right, so I will call the question. Um, stay tuned for more information to come, but we will support this, uh, resolution from Georgian Bluffs. All in favor? That is carried. Uh, item ten point eight is, uh, correspondence from MPP Rick Byers encouraging the Hanover and District Hospital Board and the South Bruce Gray Hospital Services Board to undertake an expedited review to assess whether an alternative configuration could better address the operating challenges at the Durham Hospital Facility. And that is for information, but of course, if there's comments or discussion, the floor is open. Okay, item, geez. Item ten point nine, I'm slipping up here, is correspondence from Enbridge Gas to local leaders across the province, encouraging us to continue to highlight the need for natural gas and its infrastructure for Ontario today and into the future. And I'm sure we're going to be using natural gas for many, many years to come. Okay, item, uh, eleven is planning and other meetings and, um, they are all listed on this agenda and on our website. Dates to remember and announcements. The next regular council meeting is Monday, June the seventeenth at four P M. And I just want to, um, put a plug in, not only for the first responders day at the Soggin Municipal Airport on Saturday from nine A M. to three P M. But also for the newcomer event and Music in the Square on the same day, um, this Saturday, June the ninth, from ten A M. to one thirty. We are all aware of this, but I'm not sure if all of our, uh, listening public is aware of it. So there's lots going on. There's, uh, the newcomer event in the Heritage Square. There'll be music. Um, the Gray Bruce Local Immigration Partnership will be there. The library is going to be there with a tent for family fun. We've got Dicky Bird, The Red Rascals with Mary Anne and Carl Holst, Petunia the Clown, Balloon Twisting, and the, of course, the Eat Well Market. And same time, well, a little earlier, but, and a little later, first responders out at the airport. So it's going to be a busy, uh, busy Saturday for everyone. Um, would anyone else like to make an announcement that's coming up on Saturday or whenever? Since it's coming up very quickly. Okay, so I'll ask, does anyone have a notice of motion? Seeing none, uh, we do have a closed meeting. And it's recommended that the council of the Town of Hanover meet in closed session in order to address a matter pertaining to personal matters about an identifiable, identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees regarding the Labyrinth of Distinction inductee. I need a mover and seconder to go into close. Counselor Sackel and Counselor Hudson. All in favor? That is carried. So we'll just take a couple of minutes to switch over. Open session and I declare, uh, we met in closed session. And, uh, rising from that, we have a motion that council approve the Labyrinth of Distinction inductees as per report, P R C zero seven twenty-four. I need a mover and a seconder to approve that. Counselor Hawking and Counselor Hudson, all in favor? That is carried. We have one final motion and that is to adjourn the open meeting at five twenty-two. I need a mover and seconder. Counselor Sackel and Deputy Mayor Dicker, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you.